Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to City Council North Bend, October 6, 2020, virtual council meeting. Call to order. If the clerk would confirm the role, please.
Your honor, everybody is present except Councilmember Rosen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
My understanding is that Councilmember Rosen will be joining us shortly, but we'll watch for him. Please note in the time when he does join. We've got a pretty short agenda tonight overall. Welcome to the first meeting of the fourth quarter of the year. This evening on the consent agenda, we have nine items. Can I get a motion?
Both approve the consent.
I have a motion by Mr. Elwood. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Godhelp. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Citizen comments. This is the time for which you can speak on items not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak tonight, please indicate in the chat box or star nine if you've joined by phone. Limit your comments to three minutes and please begin by giving us your name and address. Don, do we have anyone looking to speak tonight?
Yes, Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, council. This is Mike Thomas, 1231 La Porres Drive, SE. I wanted to actually talk briefly on an item that was requested to be moved to regular agenda, but was unfortunately passed on consent agenda. Of course, I care very much about our water in the area and I very much enjoy Rattlesnake Lake. And I visit it often and I noticed how incredibly low it gets in the summer. And it started to get me thinking about what North Bend is doing for mitigation water. And of course, the topic of your study is intended to actually divert all the water from Hobo Springs. Well, Hobo Springs drains to Rattlesnake Lake. And I'm concerned that the lake is getting very low. Is it possible that the lake will get so low that it will be depleted or even dried up as a result of North Bend's original mitigation design, as well as even taking more water? What your project is going to do is take a lot more water. And I'm very concerned this hasn't been studied. So I was very pleased to see your study by Landau Associates, who's independent of Goldr. And I think that's very important. It's very important that we have independent engineering and that the engineering is neutral, not favorable to the city, not favorable to past designs. And this has to pass muster with Seattle Public Utilities. You know, Rattlesnake Lake is also in a park. It's part of the Rattlesnake Ledge Trail. I think it could be a major problem for the city, both recreationally, the county, the whole sounds, if Rattlesnake Lake gets a reputation that it's drying up and really at the hands of the city of North Bend because of its mitigation design. I'm very curious if this has ever been studied. I think there's a potential risk here. And when I look at your water system plan, your plan to need more than 200 million gallons of mitigation water by the end of this. That's 400 acre feet more than what you took in 2015. Are there 400 acre feet left in that lake before it dries up? This is a very important study question. I would hope that this study done by Landau, and by the way, I applaud the choice of Landau. Landau has done some excellent studies for Seattle Public Utilities. In fact, they did the Cedar Marine Safety Studies, which actually are discussing increasing the fill level of Chester Morse. So I'm looking forward to the outcome of this study, but I'm also very concerned even about the existing plans. And I know you need more mitigation water, but perhaps you need to rethink the entire mitigation design and also to not take every single drop that drains from Hobo Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
I would have, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I look forward to seeing your study.
Thank you. Don, do we have anyone else?
We do. Monica, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Monica Lowney, address PO Box 493, Snowquamy, Washington. I am coming to you on behalf of citizens in the greater Snowquamy Valley area. I am an environmental advocate as well as a Sierra Club member. I'm also a member of SCAN, which is the Snowquamy Valley Action Network. It's a group of individuals that's been formed over the past few years in the city of Snowquamy and surrounding area regarding the anticipation of the old Snowquamy mill site being developed. We have a lot of grave concerns. We've raised many and hired environmental experts to review the DEIS, which was released by the city of Snowquamy during COVID around May, and the deadline was July 10. Many citizens responded in the surrounding area as well as King County with concerns and Department of Ecology, because EPA has found known contaminants on this site. As many of you know, this old mill site was run by transformers, so there was a lot of PCB oil generated and other petroleum hydrocarbons that at the time, you know, were legally disposed of in the site. There was also a fire on the site where a transformer leaked a lot of PCB oil into the ground and it has not been fully mitigated. One of the big concerns is this development would bring in a large trucking distribution center, an outdoor amphitheater that would seat 5,000 people and many other, many other items that citizens are concerned about our roadways and our infrastructure. We believe this is a regional impact. We want to make sure that all of the surrounding cities are aware of what's happening with the city of Snowquamy. The DEIS will go into final stages soon and final comments will be accepted by individuals like yourself, and we really hope that North Bend will take a close look at this. If you go on our website, which is savesnowquamymill.com and click on DEIS letters, you could review the experts. We hired two environmental experts with grave concerns, as well as a traffic engineer by the name of Gary Norris with DN Traffic. King County's letters, as well as Department of Ecology's concerns are also listed on our website. We feel that it's very important to look at this closely because our drinking water may be at stake if this site is developed prior to being fully remediated of contaminants. We feel our river could be at stake as well. And as you know, we're all interconnected through roadways, as well as underground aquifers and the river. It also affects our local neighbors downstream, so.
Ms. Lowry, if you would please summarize.
Basically, I sent a letter earlier today for all of the council members to review, and I would hope, Mayor, maybe you would review that as well. And if you could please go on our website and update yourselves on what's happening in your neighborhood, because it will impact North Bend and your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lowry.
No one else?
Anyone else?
Nobody else.
Okay. With that, we will move on to presentations and appointments and announcements. And tonight, we do have an appointment to the Parks Commission. I'm extremely pleased to be bringing forward a candidate for the youth position on our Parks Commission, Luke Duval. And he is with us tonight, and in a moment, I'll ask him to unmute and say a few words. And I want to give the council an opportunity to ask questions or speak their mind on this issue before we take a vote. Luke is, I believe, a junior this year and is a legacy as well. He has an older brother who served several years ago on the Park Commission. He has got some environmental background. We had two applicants for the position, both of them highly qualified. It was really a very, very tough choice. We should, could have chosen them both, but we did go with Luke. And so Luke, would you introduce yourself, unmute, and introduce yourself to the council?
Hi, everyone. I'm Luke, junior at Mount Sinai High School. Really looking forward to work with all you guys. I'd turn on my, there's my camera. Hi, everyone. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to working with all you guys. And yeah, do you guys have any questions or?
Counsel, any questions, comments for our candidate? Heather?
Luke, thank you for doing this, and I'm just wondering what your interest was to get involved.
Um, yeah, I, I have, over the last two years, I've been searching for more opportunities to kind of serve my community, especially like environmentally based ones. So I did some work with like the Seattle Aquarium and the Mount Sinai School Green Team. And then my brother had done this position and he'd always said it was a super rewarding just position, and I instantly was interested. And yeah, I'm just, I'm super excited. I kind, I kind of have a feel for what I might want to expect, but really it'll probably a really new type of experience, but I'm super, super excited just to do whatever I can.
I think we all appreciate your young voice and your vision, so thank you.
Hey, Luke, thank you for stepping up, you know, and stepping up and providing community service. By the tone of your voice, you sound extremely excited about it, and we look forward to having you on the Parks Board, and thank you for stepping up, and I think it's wonderful what you're doing.
Yeah, I am super excited and that does mean a lot. Thank you.
Mr. Godhelp, Mr. Garcia?
Luke, welcome aboard. I was just, I'm so impressed when people like yourself step up and do this. Luke, what are a couple of things you'd like to see our parks improve on?
Um, the main like couple of things I've been thinking about is I'd like to eventually integrate some like environmental, how do I put it, like information into some of our parks. A lot of the parks are bordering these wilderness areas that hold just amazing wildlife. So eventually seeing maybe like some signs or some, I don't know, I don't know which way I want to integrate it, but getting people informed on kind of the wildlife around us and eventually inspiring them to kind of conserve and care about it. And then the other one is with the like new North Bend Skate Park. I skateboard at like the Snowquamy Park all the time, and there's a lot of like bad and undesirable stuff going on. So with the new North Bend Skate Park, I'd like to kind of see that become a more caring place than like the previous skate park. Yeah.
Well, let us know if there's a way that we could help with that.
I'm getting the ideas flowing.
I don't know if you've seen the guns that Loudonback packs around, but we could do some pulling on that.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Anyone else? Mr. Loudonback?
Thank you. Luke, thanks again for volunteering. It sounds like you're an advocate for the skate parks, and that's a great thing. Are there any other passive or active recreational activities you'd like to participate in that you might be able to bring some insights to the Park Department with?
Yeah, I love hiking. That's it. I love just being in outdoors, so I really like hiking. I really like rock climbing, so I use like the Torgson Rock Wall a lot. But I personally, like a lot of times when I'm actually at the parks, I'm just walking around them or riding my skateboard and just kind of enjoying them, just for like the nice peaceful environment. But like the main recreational activities I do, like at the parks are just, I do a lot of skateboarding, I do a lot of rock climbing. But yeah, those are like the main things, I guess.
Great, well, bring your passion, and it seems like you're ready and excited to be a part of the Parks Department, and we're excited to have you. So look forward to seeing great things from you.
Thank you. Means a lot.
Okay, last call, Ms. Miller. Unmute, unmute.
Okay, I'll round off by, can you hear me? Everybody hear me? Luke, welcome aboard. I love your enthusiasm and you've got a great personality and we're lucky to have you. So can't wait to see all that you are involved with, if you need any questions answered or you're welcome to call, I'm sure any, each and any one of us here. We're thrilled to have you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sure I'll have a lot of, a lot of questions. I assume the first kind of couple like steps of this might be a little bit of a learning process, but I'm really, really excited just to learn all I can and try my best. And yeah, it means a lot. Every, every one of you guys' input is really, really helpful. Thank you.
All right, I think that wraps it up. Thank you, Luke, for everything you've provided in that introduction. Counsel, may I have a motion? Mr. Garcia? Motion by Mr. Godhelp just beat out Mr. Garcia. Are you seconding? Nope, he done known to second.
Absolutely, I'll second.
Mr. Garcia? The second, I have a motion by Mr. Godhelp, second by Mr. Loudonback to approve the appointment of Luke Duval to the youth position on the North Bend Parks Commission. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hand up by Mr. Garcia. Any opposed? It is a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Luke. Really appreciate you stepping up to serve. We will be in touch with an official certificate, and I'm sure Mike will be in touch with you regarding starting times. So thank you very much. Appreciate you being here with us.
Thank you guys so much. This means so much to me.
And with that, we will move on. We have to agenda item 11, AB 20-134, An Ordnance Amending North Bend Municipal Code 1816 on Parking Regulations. I believe Mr. Reynolds is here for the staff report.
Yes, I am. I can't seem to get my camera to work. It looks like it, oh, there we go. Start my video. Congratulations to Luke. Now onto parking regulations. So NBMC 1816, I'll start by clarifying, this is, these are regulations for new development only, so none of these apply to existing developments. We're not adding regulations to already created parking. And the impetus to this update is that our parking regulations haven't occurred for about 10 years now. A lot has changed in our downtown and surrounding areas, and we pursued this on advice from our executive team. The original staff changes included five elements, which is adding bike parking regulations, opening language for in-lit fee for downtown parking or a parking improvement district, updating our minimum standards table and adding unlisted uses, simplification of procedures and regulations for using city lands for off-street parking, and the elimination of counting on-street parking for residential development except for affordable housing. And so we took those recommendations and we did some public outreach to our business outreach group, and then we went through the Planning Commission, three meetings, including a public hearing and went through this process and received some comments. We received minimal comments, mostly involving to not reducing some of the requirements. And as a result, what we did was we kept the language, making it favorable to create an in-lit fee for downtown parking or a parking improvement district. We added a provision, we added the provision for unlisted uses, and we simplified the procedures for using city lands for off-street parking. We did omit the bike requirements. The Planning Commission felt that this is more appropriate to do through our design standards. And one adjustment to our minimum standards was we differentiated between multifamily residential, where two or more bedroom units are. The requirements in downtown are slightly less than all the areas outside of the DC zone. So 1.5 parking spots per unit of two plus bedrooms versus two outside the areas of the downtown commercial zone. There is also, for off-street parking, we added some more specific language requiring right-of-way may only be used for deed restricted units of affordable housing and no more than 50% of the development. So there is still the possibility of using the right-of-way for, for parking, but only for deed restricted, affordable housing. And that pretty much sums it up. The result is what you've seen in your packets. In September, the CED Committee gave the blessing to move forward to council, and that is my introduction.
Let me get unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Any clarifying questions for staff prior to moving to public comment? Heather?
Yeah, so on the very first page on the summary statement, it says, "City Council in support of this amendment on June 25, 1010." Was that a typo? Was it supposed to be 2020?
It most certainly was a typo. Thank you for pointing that out.
That's it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, is there any member of the public looking to speak? Ms. Vasco?
So far, I am not seeing anybody.
Okay. All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, your honor. Motion to approve AB 20-134, An Ordnance Amending North Bend Municipal Code Table 18.16, Parking Regulations as a first and final reading.
Do I have a second? Where'd that come from? Mr. Garcia, is that you?
Maybe, maybe.
Well, we could wait a few hours and see if you'd like to tell us it was.
Yes. You said yes.
Very much. I have a motion by Councilmember Loudonback, second by Mr. Garcia, to approve, motion AB 20-134, An Ordnance Amending North Bend Municipal Code Table 18.16, Parking Regulations as a first and final reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries it and is unanimous. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That is the end of the regular agenda. We're going to move on to mayor, council, and administrator concerns and initiatives. From my list of who I could see coming on first, first move to Mr. Loudonback.
Thank you, your honor. Belated happy birthday, I believe, was in order, Mr. Godhelp?
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Alan. Happy birthday to you.
Good thing that Alan.
Alan probably never felt so loved. Oh, and I see Mr. Rosen has joined us just in time to adjourn the meeting.
Yeah. What on earth did I log into? I don't know, but.
It's a birthday celebration.
Thank you for the nice song.
He came just to sing, Alan, you must feel so loved.
Oh, yeah.
And the sad thing is.
I've got you next. Oh, I'm sorry. You have more?
No, just, just the sad thing is that if you took all the council members and staff and put their fingers and toes together, it still wouldn't equal how old Mr. Godhelp actually is.
Ooh.
Thank you.
Well, he was there, he was there when the original motion was written up in June 5, 1010, on Jesse Johnson. It was original, he was the original signer back then.
That, that is correct.
One thing I have.
Thank you, your honor. That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm losing control. Well, with that, Mr. Godhelp, you'll be pleased to know that I have you up next.
Well, thank you. Well, I, you know, the one thing I can, you know, have comfort is, is that I know Ross is older than me, so, you know, I'll never catch up with him, but I do appreciate, you know, the abuse and the camaraderie of my council members, and I thank you for the song. I definitely turned, definitely beat red during there, so it's a little warm. Thank you for that, and I really have nothing to say, but welcome to the new, God lost his name, the gentleman that just became Parks Mission. I really am impressed with, very impressed with his enthusiasm and really love to see when young people step up to the plate. And so good for him and what a good pick for that position. So that's all I have tonight. Everybody stay safe, keep your masks on, stay healthy, and enjoy the fall as it becomes.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Okay. Oh, look at.
Now you muted yourself. There you are.
I feel like my IQ is dropping. That should never be the case. Everybody have a great night, stay safe. Luke, we're, we're gonna love having you onboard and hear your voice and that, your generation, we want to hear how, what you feel like, so, what we can do. So take care, everybody. Enjoy.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, well, I was gonna sing happy birthday to Alan, but I swear I knocked that out, so that's good. You know, the more and more I talk to people around right now, I'm concerned about people's mental well-being as this, this drags on. So I just want to encourage people to, you know, stay safe, keep your family safe, stay upbeat, try to find solace in something you love to do when you can. If you need help, please seek out friends, loved ones, medical, mental help, whatever it is that can help you guys get through this. I know this, the longer this goes, the harder it gets for everybody, but it's really, I feel like it's really becoming vocalized more and more that people are struggling. So, you know, just please be safe and sane out there.
Thank you. Great sentiment. Ms. Cullen?
I just want to say all the same things. Happy birthday to you, Alan. Congratulations to Luke. We're excited. Continue wearing your masks, but also I'm gonna add, it's flu season, so it's time to get your flu shots, even if you don't want to. I think it's a good thing to do. And stay safe, stay healthy.
Thank you very much. Mr. Elwood?
Thank you, your honor. I'd like to say, welcome aboard, Luke. This is fantastic. Can't wait to see where you want to take things, so that's great. Also wanted to, Mr. Reynolds made me think again about other people, and of course Luke joining us as well, that, that do volunteer and donate their time, such as the Planning Commission. So I'm gonna drop them a note and a little note of appreciation, because I know the late hours that they spend and a lot of tedious things. Parking regulations may, may kind of be there, but it is important, and those folks are in the room making those decisions and making magic happen. So I'd like to give a shout out to all of our volunteers and recognition for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. I suppose it'll take a vote of the remainder of council on whether we will allow Mr. Rosen to speak or not. Mr. Rosen, do you have anything for us this evening?
I have a prepared speech, but no, nothing. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Mr. Miller, anything for staff perspective?
No, we're just excited to get on with the form-based code information. Got some real good information for you tonight.
Wow, that's short. Well, you guys were all excited about that, I'm sure, but I do apologize. I have a number of comments for everyone tonight. So first off, I want to introduce our new Community and Economic Development Director, Rebecca Demming, her first official meeting with us. Prior to joining the city on September 28, Rebecca served as the Community Development Director for Desert Hot Springs in California. So welcome aboard, Rebecca. I'm sure you're getting the opportunity, as time permits, to meet council members. So wonderful to have you with us, and everybody, please welcome her here. Reach out.
Thank you.
Next, as of today, the city has entered into Phase Two of the city's Water Conservation Ordinance, and I wanted to draw everyone's attention to that. The Water Conservation Ordinance does apply to all homes and businesses within the city limits. During Stage Two, all Stage One rules remain in place, including allowed watering times between 6:00 PM at night and 10:00 AM in the morning, when less evaporation occurs. Stage Two of the WCO limits landscape and pasture irrigation, except for drip irrigation, to a maximum of three days a week, based on an odd and even schedule according to your address. More information about the WCO, in specific to Stage Two rules, and. More information about the WCO and specific to Stage Two rules and applicable watering schedule is available in the news section on the city's website. And again, for emphasis, the basic change between one and two is just reducing the number of days of irrigation. I'm also pleased to announce that the city recently received notification from FEMA that the city will retain its current rating as a Class Five in the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System, or CRS as it's known. This rating allows for the continued 25% discount on flood insurance premiums and is a very tangible result of the flood mitigation activities implemented in our community to protect the lives and reduce property damage. It's a great win. 25%, so significant amount. We're very pleased that we continue to be a part of that program. The city is going to be hosting a shred-it event this Saturday, October 10th, from 8:00 AM to noon here at City Hall. This free event is open to all North Bend residents. Individuals may bring up to two file boxes or three grocery bags of documents. Please do not bring stiff metal plastic bags or DVDs as they may jam the shredder. The city is seeking applicants for a vacancy on the Economic Development Commission. Applications are available on the news section of the city website or by contacting the city clerk. The deadline for that application submission is this next Friday, October 16th. We'd love to see new applicants. It's a great commission and a great way to get involved with your city. Ballots for the upcoming November election will be mailed by King County Election Staff on Wednesday, October 14th, according to their announcement. For more information about ballot measures and ballot drop box location, please visit the King County Elections website And I'm gonna throw an extra little plug in there. If you are not registered, there is still time to register. Please register. Election is four weeks, 28 days from today. In case you missed an earlier press release, we are also very pleased to report that over $164,000 in CARES grants has been awarded by the city to 45 businesses and counting. Recipients included restaurants, retail stores, and service businesses who met the criteria established by the State Department of Commerce and made application with us. We're very excited to be able to help out our local businesses and to continue to do so. Finally, I encourage all to check out the mayor's quarterly message available on the news section of the city website also. This message features highlights of the third quarter city happenings related to legislation, infrastructure, and other community projects, planning, and the city budget. Lot of good information there about what your city is doing and the progress that's been made by staff and council. Council, please remember, we do have a special budget work study this coming Tuesday, October 13th, at 7:00 PM. And with that, I will stop. We'll go, go back to Ms. Masco. I'm going to be looking for a motion to adjourn. Remember, as a note to everyone on the meeting, we're gonna put everyone into the lobby for a brief time, and then we will begin the council work study. As a reminder, the public, while work studies are open to the public, we do not take any public comment during that time. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Loudenback. Motion by Mr. Elwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Don't be so enthusiastic. Any opposed? Mr. Garcia, the motion carries. Mr. Garcia, descending. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.